Kevin, as the other panelists join, will they be promoted to speakers as well?
Yes.
Thank you.
Eva, did you make it back safely?
I'm flying out this afternoon.
Good luck.
Yeah.
Where are you?
I am actually in Colorado. I got stuck here with a snowstorm. I was planning on taking two days off and flying back, but I got stuck in the snowstorm.
I did see Dallas for Worth is totally closed.
Yeah. The airport here is open, so it's just getting to the airport.
Good morning, Chair Harrington. That and we are live when you are ready to go and just and we have Commissioner Willie joining right now.
Okay, so we'll give we'll give folks a little bit to get all settled. So they've got their video and audio set up. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the atypical Thursday, February 3rd, 2022, Washington County Board of Commissioners work session. I do want to highlight that we have an additional agenda item for today. We'll be having a executive session after our first two topics. And it is estimated to be a long one. So hopefully you've all had a chance to catch up with that and make accommodations on your schedule. The other thing that we need to touch on right now was an item that we didn't get 100% closure on on Tuesday. So I'll cover that real briefly. That is the state of the county approach. On Tuesday, I reminded you that we all had that proposal from our team and and me in helping them organize it. I do have feedback that Commissioner Five would like to cover public health. So on page two, they'll she'll cover priorities for 2022, public health and transportation. I haven't heard of any other approach changes from any other commissioners. So I thought given, go ahead, Commissioner Trist.
I did talk with Tanya yesterday about I was thinking more about it. And I'd like to make sure that my focus on the areas of, I believe it was childcare and pre-K has got an economic side to it as well. So I
That's all up to you. Sure. Yeah.
I just I
Yeah, yep. So these are just the big broad buckets, right? And the same staff resources that you had available to you to pull your content together are available to you this year as well. So to make sure that climate change is covered, I will continue forward with contracting and workforce equity. I'll combine into one planning, future planning, both the county strategic plan and misstep transportation planning process. I'll make sure to coordinate with Commissioner Fai, so we're not duplicating with regard to transportation. And my third topic will be our climate change work. Everybody else, I assume, is all set by virtue of not making any comment. So heads head nods, shoulder shrugs. Commissioner, are you okay? Excellent. All righty. So onward how we go. Your policy assistants, Philip and company Philip Bransford and Mary Fetch will help us get this taken care of. So, all righty. Oh, I forgot to mention for the record, this is Chair Catherine Harrington. And with us today, Vice Chair Willie, Commissioners Pam Trees, Roy Rogers, and Deficeify. I know we have the video, but we had to make sure we get it on the audio too. All righty, so we'll dive right into our first topic as headed by our wonderful Chief Human Resources Officer and her great team members who shall introduce our own Eva Labonte. Eva, take it away.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm really happy to be here to present this information to you on workforce and succession planning. We will be starting with information that I know you've been looking forward to an update on our retirements and where we are with that in the county. We have expanded this quite a bit from retirements. We have, as we work towards elevating human resources and what we're able to do, we have a lot of data now that will lead us right into why succession planning and workforce planning is so important. So we're looking forward to sharing that with you. I do want to mention that as we work towards this plan and getting it in place, we will be diving more into data analysis and specifically with an equity lens, as that is so important. So we will be breaking down the numbers that we're sharing today, which are overall numbers by race, gender, ethnicity, and also position. And we're looking forward to bringing those back to your board to share with you in more detail as this plan becomes more more filled out. We will be bringing the policy for succession planning to you at the end of next month. And at that point, we will have that data for you to share. We'll also be sharing it with employees and the public on our website. So we can be fully transparent on where we are in the county and where we hope to be as we develop our workforce planning over the next five years. So we're looking forward to having that data and showing that with you as well. So the data we have today is high level. So I want to introduce to you, you're right, I have a fantastic team of our human resources professionals who are working on this as part of their jobs that they get to do a little bit of a stretch assignment, which is wonderful because they are all extremely helpful and competent in this area. Starting with Candace Bell, who is one of our senior human resources business partners, who has a strong background in this area. Also Brianna Jackson, our learning and development program manager. Jasmine Cardenas, who's one of our talent acquisition business partners. And also our project manager on this Keith Shoup, who is our HR management analyst too. So we're looking forward to sharing this information with you. Next slide. Sorry, the mute button. The data that we'll be presenting to you today is from fiscal year 1516 through 2021. We'll be focusing on unplanned separation types. So that includes resignations, retirements, dismissals, and failure to complete probation. The separation types that we will not be including are deceased, ended temporary assignment layoffs, medical layoffs, and work refusals. And the reason we're not including these is because they are either statistically insignificant or they are planned separations such as temporary assignments. Additionally, temporary assignments are typically brought on for a specific purpose or project. And therefore, they are not considered key positions within our organization, nor are the incumbents the only keepers of county knowledge. Next slide. Here we have the number of employees, the number of separations, and the separation rate per fiscal year. As you can see by looking at the bottom row, the county average is separation rate of 10%. You may also know that while the number of employees is steadily increasing in the second column, the number of separations in the third column has remained fairly stagnant. Next slide. Here we are comparing our separation rates with state and local government agencies nationwide as well as the national average, which includes all industry types for the past five years. Looking at this chart, we can see that Washington County has a separation rate that is less than half of state and local governments and less than a quarter of the national average. Please note that the last year during the height of the pandemic, our separation rate decreased in comparison to the previous year. On the other hand, the separation rate increased for state and local governments and the national average. Next slide. And here we have a visual representation of the previous slide. Washington County, which is represented by the blue line, shows a very steady separation rate from 2016 to 2020. State and local government agencies in orange also show a steady rate. However, it is double that of Washington County. And in gray, we have the national average, which again is four times greater than our separation rate. And it's increasing while ours has steadily decreased. Next slide. I think another interesting point of data that we have is the average length of years of service. And Washington County right now, our average years of service is 8.9 years. And for some of us, that may seem short. And we're we are long past the time in the United States of people taking a job and staying there, their careers. So as compared to the national average of 4.1 years, it's a it's a good statistic for Washington County. This doesn't mean we don't have work to do. We have a lot of work to do as far as continuing our efforts on employee engagement and making sure that our employees see Washington County as a place they can stay and grow their career. So that is certainly part of our workforce planning efforts and and planning over the next five years is to make sure that we have those opportunities for our employees. Next slide. So next we'll be focusing on the departments with the highest number of people leading the organization from June 2015 through July 2021. And we have the Sheriff's Office, Health and Human Services, Land Use and Transportation, and Community Corrections. And again, this is based on the separation types that we talked about earlier and that we will cover in the next slide. Next slide. So again, we have our departments here and the different separation types. Departments are across the top. As you can see, by looking at the last two rows, the Sheriff's Office has the highest number of separations, but the lowest separation rate versus Community Corrections, who has the lowest number of separations, but the highest separation rate. And this is because the Sheriff's Office is a much larger department, the Community Corrections in terms of FT. Next slide. So here again, another visual representation of the previous slide. Departments are listed across the board. We have each bar that represents each of the separation types. And I want to bring to your attention the orange and yellow bars. Next slide, which show the number of resignations and retirements per department. As you can see, there are significantly more resignations throughout the all four departments than retirements. Next slide. And this is another way to visually represent our information. It is really interesting that while we always have to keep an eye on retirement, those are more of our known or possibly known separations. And this the resignations are typically ones that we are not anticipating. And that is, you know, as you can see, a vast majority of our separations. This is where we are going to be diving into our data more for much more analysis on what that looks like as far as race, gender, ethnicity, and position. And it will give us also years of service on the number when they're leaving. So we have a lot of great data to go through and bring back to you at a later time. So this is really interesting information that we need to dive into more to really understand it better and also work on a survey for the county. We plan on using this year to gather more information on how people are feeling on engagement as well. Next slide. Now we're going to get into the actual numbers for retirement. So what you see on the left side is over the last five years, we have a fairly steady number of people who are retiring. You will notice, of course, a jump in fiscal year 1920. And if you recall, that is when the Oregon legislature put in PERS SB 1049, which changed the ability for people to retire from PERS and then continue working unlimited hours. We also had a piece of that bill that was concerning for some of our employees, which capped the amount of salary that would be considered for their annuity retirement. And when you add in their salary and their vacation as they leave the organization, that was concerning for some people. So we did have more retirements in that year. And number of those people actually continued working for the county with our policy, which has really helped our succession planning processes to have those people continue to work for the county. On the right, you'll see the number of people who are eligible to retire. And I'm going to write, jump in and say that number is incorrect because of what we don't know. PERS, Oregon PERS does not and will not, no matter how many times we ask, provide us with data as far as how long people have in PERS away from Washington County. So for example, when someone comes to Washington County, they'll show they've been here, for example, five years. And they may actually have 25 years in PERS, but we wouldn't know that because they have worked at other local agencies in Oregon. So it's misleading. The number is low and we fully recognize that. We do know when people are eligible to retire by their age and by their years of service at Washington County. And those are the numbers you're seeing here. So it is it is low and we recognize that. And unfortunately, we just can't gather that data. The other piece to consider is that a lot of people have their own personal plan. So because of their own life situations, some people plan to retire at 50 and some plan to retire at 75 or 80. And that is also something we're unaware of. So recognizing this number is low, these are people who, as we know, are eligible to retire right now from PERS. And this is why, again, it's so important to go through our succession planning and workforce planning continually, work on that. So we're ready when people do decide to leave, that we have people who can either fill the position and do the work temporarily or can apply for and openly compete for positions as we open them. It's incredibly important to do this work so we can continue to serve the community in the manner that we need to. Next slide.
Since PERS is unable to share their records with us, we decided to look at the ages of all county staff. Overall, the ages are pretty, it's a pretty standard bell curve, pretty evenly distributed across. The average staff age is 43. And the two columns on the right represent staff who are 55 and older, which is significant because 55 is the earliest that someone can retire from PERS if they meet certain criteria. And the staff who are 55 and older represent 22% of our total staff at the moment. Next slide, please.
We're coming, sorry, excuse me, my accent's a little unstable. We're coming to you not only with data, but also with an update regarding our plans for workforce. And before sharing the plan, I want to define workforce planning. Workforce planning is an organizational process used to analyze its workforce and determine the steps it must take to prepare for future staffing needs, including a systematic assessment of workforce composition to identify issues and determine actions must be taken to respond to future needs. Determining whether future skill, sorry, determining whether future skill needs will be met by recruiting or by training. And lastly, creating employee learning and development opportunities in order to prepare the workforce for future promotion or retraining. Next slide.
So I'm going to talk to you a little bit about what the workforce planning process looks like. There are five core steps that go through this process. And as you can see here, it starts out with a plan. And that's where HR and department leaders will partner to discuss objectives and goals and and most likely put a team together within their department. The next step you move on to is the analysis, looking at the data, such as what we've shared with you today, and forecasting for the next five years. In the development phase, so we're putting all of the data together and putting your process together and communicating it to the department. In the phase where you're implementing it, that's where you're executing on the plan. And then what may appear to be the last phase, but is never the last stop in this process, you're going to evaluate, that means review, revise if necessary, and recommunicate what the plan is. Next slide. So just a little bit more information on some of the components of planning and implementing this type of program. When you use data to develop the plans, what you're doing is looking at data such as what we've shared here with you today. Recruitment data, some of that data might be important in terms of such as hard to fill positions, but really getting an eye on all of the components that go into filling positions, retaining people in those positions, and then filling them once they become vacant again. Identifying key positions and high potential employees. So what's a key position? So a key position is if if a position were vacant, it would have a significant impact on the county's ability to provide effective services. So you can imagine, much like apartment leader, such as a director, assistant director, or any of the higher level leaderships within a department. Now, a high potential employee is an employee that exhibits kind of those necessary skills for a leadership or management position. That could look like they have potential ability and most of all aspiration to be successful in a leadership role. So we're looking at identifying both of those areas throughout this plan. That's an organization. As we're working with the one Washington County initiative, we may want to, as an organization, identify what core competencies are for leaders in our organization. And then departments can individually identify what their needs are within those competencies, or they could go the other direction and define their own. So that is still yet to be determined, but it's important that we know what those competencies are. Then we're going to identify skill gaps. As Brianna mentioned, as we're identifying and forecasting for five years, services may change over the five years. And what might we need in terms of skills that we don't have now for that future service delivery? So we're going to identify where those gaps are and make plans around addressing them. We're going to train department leaders, HR will, on how to go about executing on employee development. So this is not going to be an HR-led process. This is definitely a very collaborative partnership between HR. We'll bring the tools and we'll bring the education, but we're going to rely on leaders to execute on their plans. And we'll be right there behind them to help them with that. But it really is going to be important for them to do the execution piece of this. Then the implementation phase, as I said, we're going to develop employees. They may have individual development plans, or you might have also heard of career development plans for employees if they voluntarily choose to be involved in that. And then lastly, that continuous review, as I mentioned, this is not just a one and done type of process. At least annually, it's important to just at least review what you've done. Make changes. You're going to analyze what what worked well, what didn't. Where do we need to make adjustments? Update your plan and then recommunicate it to the departments and the organization. So that's just in a nutshell, some of the key components of workforce planning. There's much more that goes into it. That's the highest level view of this process. Next slide.
The key takeaways from this, we have a good, solid, steady separation rate from the county, which is lower than other organizations. Again, that doesn't mean we don't have work to do. We do. And we recognize that. But I think it's important to to that to recognize that Washington County still holds a pretty decent record as far as retaining our employees. Looking forward to more work on employee engagement and making sure that people can see a path at Washington County to grow and develop here and stay with us. And again, those two thirds of our employees' separation, there's a lot of work to do in that space as far as diving more into our data and determining what that looks like as far as the race, gender, ethnicity, position, years of service. And what can we do through this workforce planning process to change those numbers and make them better and find people a path to stay here in our organization and be ready to move up and grow their career?
And as Candace mentioned previously, workforce planning will be a countywide effort that is led by human resources and driven by each department. It is paramount that we step into a space where helping our our leaders to understand that they have a stake in the game to be able to really support and lead workforce planning for their employees. Secondly, or not secondly, but secondly for me, the employee learning and development is crucial for succession planning, having opportunities for people, for leaders at all levels, as Tanya calls them, to have the opportunity to learn in asynchronous and synchronous formats will be really critical to us being able to have a strong succession planning program. And lastly, workforce planning is a continuous process, never one and done. But as our county goals shift, so should the goals of our employees, who are always having their personal goals, but also mapping their goals back to what the goals for the year or the cycle are for the county. Next slide.
This team plans to have a workforce planning policy before the board by the end of March. We then will finalize supporting procedures in the spring and be and begin the countywide implementation this coming summer and fall. As mentioned by Candace, you know, HR will be a partner with all the different divisions and departments across the county to help them implement this process. Next slide, please. And now we are ready for questions.
Commissioners, I know for the four of us who were here in 2019, we had the opportunity of some of the first ever reports about our workforce and workforce demographics. So you're really advancing our knowledge base in terms of our workforce as well as advancing our workforce strength through training, through career encouragement. It's really wonderful. Thank you so much for really helping foster the culture here at Washington County. We're a big agency. We have terrific employees. They can rest assured that they have career growth opportunities as well as delivering value each and every day as public servants. So I hope with that little segue that bought some time for commissioners to cultivate their questions. So commissioners, questions, comments, Commissioner Tris, go ahead.
And I don't think that you can, you guys can see my little hand up on this background. So I, I'm going to have, I'm going to change the color of my hand there so that you can see it better. First of all, I echo what the chair said. This is great. I think that this was a place where we really needed to do a deep dive and make sure we understand in in relationship to the future. So thank you for all your work here. Could we go back to page eight, please?
I believe that Clerk Moss and team are pulling up the slideshow again and going to slide eight.
Thank you very much. So Eva, I think what you said here was the separation rate. The in the future, what we're going to get is information about, I think I understand that the separation rate is a factor of the the number of people in the department divided by the number of people that leave. Is that correct, first of all?
That's correct.
Okay, okay. So size of the department is is an important piece here. Okay. I just just want to make sure that we're really emphasizing that point here. And then again, on page 10. Thanks, Clerk Moss. This is, you said that we're going to be getting more information into the future. And this was kind of an alarming, you know, snapshot, if you will. And I assume that we're going to be looking at this over time. What's happened as well included in the information into the future. Is that correct, Eva?
Yes, thank you for that question. Absolutely. This is baseline data as as we start our workforce and succession planning program. So we're hoping these numbers shift and change. So yeah, the deep dive will will definitely break down that big block of resignations. Retirements are a little bit more straightforward, but the resignations, there's a lot of information we can we can gather both quantitative and qualitative as far as why those are happening. And we're looking forward to doing that. And that's where this succession planning leads right into employee engagement. So those are connected.
So I also want to, I also want to bring up the issue So I also want to, I also want to bring up the issue of societal issues in relationship to this number with a with a great resignation that we're seeing. And I think that it's important that we get information from the outside as well as looking at the information from the inside. So I, you know, I'd like to make sure that we're informed as to to what's happening in relationship to the pandemic, in relationship to the, you know, the situation where people have to meet childcare needs, all the different pieces that that may be a part of what is being called the the Great Resignation. So I just want to really emphasize that we look, we're not just looking at our belly button, so to speak. We're we're looking, we're looking outside as as well. And, you know, I'd like to get information from people like Echo Northwest, so to kind of understand that. So that that are my, those are my two comments there. Thank you.
Thank you. And Candace actually has some more to add on that. She's been doing that research that you've been discussing. Candace, do you have anything you wanted to add right now?
Yeah, I too have been kind of tracking the Great Resignation. It's a great interest to me. And some of the factors that are going into that, as I understand, have to do with the shift directly related to the pandemic where people, one day were in their offices working and that next week they were told to get out, you know, go home, work from home, a whole new shift for people. But then people who've done that have said, hey, my hour commute each way to and from work every day, I don't have to do that anymore. That is really attractive to me. My time at home is better spent, you know, with my family. And people are looking for organizations who are open to remote work opportunities. We're a local government, so that may not be a direction that we can go, but we certainly have put our alternative work, you know, policy in place that provides at least the conversation for staff to have with department leadership around whether those opportunities are available in some form or fashion. So there are some things that that come out of this pandemic that definitely play into that Great Resignation, and we will be looking at that very closely and trying to tie some of that back to our employee engagement initiatives and our overall succession planning and and not let that stuff, those factors stand alone without due consideration to how they might possibly play into Washington County's overall plans.
Right. And our telecommuting policy is a regular policy as well as alternative work schedule policy. They are not COVID policies. So we were a little bit ahead of the curve and had those in place as as COVID started. And we will definitely be having to look at that, who can telecommute and who can't as part of this engagement piece to to lower our separation rate.
And thank you, Candace and Eva. I just want to make sure that as we get information from the outside, our projections are 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 realistic in relationship to what we can expect with the separation rate. You know, I mean, it's just, you know, I I don't want to set us up for a situation where we expect to return back to something that had a status of three years ago, which is not going to happen. But I'd like to make sure we we're getting the right type of information from those who can provide it to us externally. So thank you again. This is great report.
No, I really appreciate that comment. Thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner, Vice Chair Willie.
Well, good morning. I want to echo some of Pam's comments. This is great information. If we could, that slide, I think if we could go back to slide eight that Pam referred to. It's not only, I think, important that we dig a little deeper as to what our resignation categories are, but obviously by department, and I apologize, I have, it's almost like it's spring out here. It's sinus issues. I'm going to sneeze in a minute, too. So anyway, I think it's it's just interesting to me, the number of resignations that are shown here. The Sheriff's Department really didn't surprise me because of the rigorous, I think, requirements and things that they have. The other departments do surprise me a little bit, especially Health and Human Services. So I'll be interested to hear more information about that. You referred to, you can go ahead and take that down if you if you would, please, Kevin. You referred to that, we don't know what about prior PERS experience they have when they when they come to work for us. Is that a question we can ask, or are we are we not allowed to ask that question?
Yeah, that's a, it's a great question. We're not. Because when you start asking people that information, you're sort of insinuating some discrimination areas you could touch on pretty easily. We're not allowed, for example, to ask people when they plan to retire, and that falls right into this category. It is, I would love to have that information. It's, it would be extremely helpful. As managers and supervisors sit down with their employees and plan their growth career path, they may naturally hear some of that information and then they can, you know, use, not use it as far as feeding it into human resources, but the departments can be more aware of what people's plans are and and help their 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 own departmental workforce planning process a little bit. There is so much information that I wish we could ask people, but it's really not appropriate to have that information and ask, unfortunately.
Well, I was actually asking about their prior employment. So we're interviewing them. We have their work history in front of us. Can't we ask them how many of those programs fall under public retirement plans? Or can we ask them any of that stuff that goes along with that?
It's difficult, but I appreciate the question. I mean, we can, we can work with county council on what we can and can't ask and see what we can bolster our numbers. It's difficult because having those conversations with everyone would be nearly impossible. And that's where it gets hard where I don't, it's the data might be better used in departments than overall countywide.
Yeah, I guess be careful what you ask whether then, because you got to collect the data on everybody. So yeah, I get that. Do we have, do we have a process, not for everyone, but for our upper tier? And I don't know exactly where that cutoff is, but for exit conferences, when people leave us, do we do exit conferences?
Great question. We, Human Resources, has a forum that we provide to departments for exit interviews. I can't say that it's done every time consistently. So that is part of this workforce planning and succession planning that we absolutely will be having in our procedures where we're asking people to, that is not an option. It is something you need to do to help us gather that information so we understand better why people are leaving the organization. And also, when I do exit interviews, you ask those questions to find out really valuable information that maybe they weren't willing to share as employees, but as they leave, they are willing to share. It can really opens some interesting avenues of things that we can work on to improve.
Yeah, and I would hope that those would be conducted by someone that's maybe independent, not connected to the department, certainly not the the their supervisor. So anyway, you know all that stuff. And then one more quick question.
Commissioner Willie, before you move on, another component that we will be looking at in workforce planning is state interviews. It is very helpful to have exit interviews, and that's when the employee is leaving. And so to have state interviews along the way to understand from employees, why are you staying? You know, what are your career aspirations? And also collecting that data is incredibly important in addition to then the exit interviews.
Yeah, that's a great, I hadn't really never thought about that part of it. I guess maybe we always, back in the private sector, we always did that on annual reviews when we were talking about compensation and promotions and those things. But yeah, that's, that's a great, great perspective.
Yeah, and I'll just add to that, taking that out of a compensation conversation lends itself to different feedback. And studies show that that actually helps with the workforce planning compared to having a conversation that's tied to employee compensation.
Yeah, because actually it communicates a message that we actually care about you and we want to develop your future and work with you on on doing what, you know, one of the slides, the workforce planning also depicted till, that's a, that's a great process. And I think that's the last one. I'm assuming that our departmental budgets, although they are constrained considerably, we have outside conferences available for some of our upper tier staffing that they can get a flavor of what goes on outside of the conference. I mean, I always considered my, the National Mayor's Conference, one of my best conferences every year because we got to meet with mayors from all over the country. And certainly here, some of the same problems they had and some of the different problems. And so I'm assuming that we have budgeted as much as we possibly could some of those conferences. Would that be accurate?
I, this is an area that we need to look at across Washington County. There are org, some departments that have have, I'll call it healthy training and development budgets, and there's other areas of the organization that do not. And so we need to really have a holistic approach to this as we move forward. And that's, I really appreciate Brianna Jackson's leadership in being the county's first learning and development manager. And this is something that we have, we've discussed so that we are looking at workforce planning holistically. So there's more, more work to do there, Commissioner Willie. Because not, to be clear, not all employees do have that opportunity currently right now.
All right. Well, this is a great process. So thanks for this information. Good job, Eva team.
See, other commissioners, Commissioner Rogers, go ahead.
Sure, thank you. I guess I'll jump on the bandwagon and say it's interesting information. I appreciate it. It looks like a good job. I have a couple of three little thoughts. I come at this from a very different perspective. This to me is staff work. I mean, we can be informed, but this is really the art of managing and administering any organization, which is what we hire CEOs to do. So with that perspective, which might be just mine alone, I too share an interest in seeing the level of people who are leaving. I have seen in the last few years, a huge exodus from retirements and people leaving who are top level. So I think that we're not really seeing the results of the talent drain. Not to say that everybody isn't talented, they are, but I mean, there are certain critical positions that we're seeing a lot of change. I mean, I'm looking at the screen of several people who are in high management positions who weren't here three years ago or four years ago. So I too am interested in that. One of the interesting issues for me that wasn't even in this study, which I I understand that no one likes to talk about it, but it's a fact of the world, is the contracting out of critical skills as well as looking remote. And I'm not talking remote, we're down the street. I'm talking remote out of state and across the country. Skill sets, if you have somebody in a, I know we struggled with accounting positions late. You study, sometimes struggle with IT positions. There are people around the country with great skill sets who it doesn't really matter when we can do these kind of meetings, whether they're, you know, two blocks away, two doors away, or 2,000 miles away. And I saw no provision at all for that. I won't even go to the other area, which nobody likes to hear about in cringe, but I can tell you every industry is looking at it, including accounting industry, and that is, there are people around the world who are available to fill a lot of slots. And we are not talking about, at least I didn't see in any of your slides, that that possibility. So yeah, I would hope and encourage, this is more for you, Tanya, again, I prefaced my beginning remark by saying, this is you. If you've got somebody in in Europe who has exactly the qualifications you have on, is wonderful, and they can meet with you on any day of the week you want, anytime via Zoom. Do you care where they're sitting in Tigard area, Oregon, where I am right now? Or in, you know, who knows, British Columbia, Canada, or England, or, you know, Bangladesh, or India, it doesn't really matter. And so I I'm hoping that you're going to be a little more holistic in that. And if you're not, I can tell you, you're not best practice with what's happening in all other industries. Jerry was touching on something that I I think is an important point, and I've argued about it for, I don't know, four or five years, maybe, maybe longer. I I think that one of our key legislative policies should be to have PERS reform in regard to the entrance, reentrance of retired people back into the workforce. It's pretty silly with the one size fits all opinion that people are going to reach a certain age and they're going to run off to do other things, which maybe they won't, and maybe they have a love for doing this kind of work. And we have this, in my opinion, this is my comments, nobody else's, this really cruddy attitude that somebody can't retire on PERS and then come back and work in a PERS position. To me, that doesn't make any sense. I mean, if somebody wants to come back and I've heard the whole argument, well, they're double dipping. Well, no, they're not. I mean, we would be filling the role anyway. I think, you know, it's been done. I've seen it in Eastern Oregon that they allow that in certain cases. And I think we need to look at that because you got a lot of very talented people who leave because they say, well, you know, I'm not ready to retire, but I, you know, I exercised my my PERS benefits to the extent that I'm not going to grow a lot more, but I can't come back to government because it doesn't allow it. And so I'm going to run off to other things. So talk about a brain drain, and it's a huge. And I don't know why we, as a a large county, can at least explore it and have that conversation about if somebody wants to leave, can they come back and what circumstances and allow? Maybe, I know it's a legislative fix, but maybe our legislative folks can say, can't we allow for that? I mean, I think, I don't know if that's what Jerry was going with these comments, but it's, it's a big issue. I've seen a lot of people say, I don't want to retire, but I am going to because I've got my full PERS benefits. I can't come back at my age to do that. And so I'm going to go off and do other things. So that that's my 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 key point. One, I believe this is, Tanya, in your your wheelhouse, and I think you're handling it. I like to know about the level of people who are leaving because I think we're having high level talent, much harder to replace. Not that everybody isn't important. I don't want to continue like that, but there are some high positions that are very difficult to afford. I hope that you're going to look at at recruitment, it's not just in Hillsboro to Tigard to Mollum County to wherever, I hope you're going to look across the country and worldwide. So contracts important, and I hope that you'll take seriously the PERS legislation and say, is there room to allow people to come back? Can't we carve out something and quit this brain drain? So that's my comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. I appreciate that. I do want to let you know that we have implemented a PERS or Work After Retirement policy where we have people, we have, I I believe it's between 80 and 100 people right now who are fully retired and continuing to work at Washington County. We do have that in place. We have a, we have our policy and procedure that go till PERS has to renew it. So they have to renew it after December 31, 2024, hoping that they will. And so we do have our policy in place and we are actively using that. And we have some great employees who are currently retired and working full time. And you're right, they it's extremely valuable asset to the organization.
And to add to, I will call it the future of work and the future of our workforce, we are looking at what positions could be fully remote, what positions do need to be reporting or within reporting distance to the office due to the function of their work. So it will not be a one size fits all due to the diversity of business operations across Washington County. And that, and also, how does that relate to part-time positions? Because the the other trend is employees are choosing multiple employers and not just one. So this will be a multi-pronged approach that will differ across Washington County as we move forward. And to the talented HR team's point, that's why we need to be working closely with the department directors to determine these strategies as well.
Thank you for your for your answers. And I just would like to underscore, I believe what Chair Harrington opened up with when when she talked about the situation when we first got, when when Catherine and Pam and Jerry first came to the commission. I think one of the most shocking things to me was our our lack of awareness of what our retirement picture looked like, what our succession planning looked like. And so so the, over the course of these last three years, there's been a lot that's been done. three years, there's been a lot that's been done. So to Roy's point, I think that, you know, I'm, I'm pleased that you've done all the work. I think that you continue to do more in our future is feeling more secure to me in relationship to no surprises. And I think one of the worst things that you can do in HR is not be prepared for what the future may look like. And I think you're doing a good job in that regard. So, so thank you for that.
Commissioner Fai, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. Eva and Tanya, great job. I really enjoyed this presentation. I too agree with Commissioner Treestead. I learned a lot about what our workforce situation is. And I don't, I think this is my first presentation somewhat in this level of detail. This is really great. And I agree with you. You do have a stellar team. I know I've worked with Candace when I was with contact tracing. Thank you so much for all the training around HR that you provided to my supervisors that reported to me. And I have a, I think a question around the resignation as well. I'll just join that bandwagon. You know, when I was a supervisor or manager, all my supervisors sort of like reported to me all the resignations that they've received. So I'm wondering what, what are your, some of your obstacles or barriers that you're facing that you didn't come with that information today? Because I think, as you can see from the rest of the commissioners, that, that's a really key interest. And I think all of us are interested in disaggregating. And I think the budget being upon us right now, I think that, that's a really crucial information to look into, whether that's the Health and Human Services upscale resignations or the Sheriff's Office to some factors. So I'm, I'm really interested in like, what it, what are your, some of your challenges and why you don't, you didn't come to that information, like at least knowing, you know, the positions and, and the qualifying information. I'm, you know, I won't speak to the quantifiable informations, but at least in any resignation, people put in a qualifier, I'm resigning due to this, this, this. And I feel like you should have had that information. And I'm assuming, because I had that information, but of course I wasn't managing 2,000 staff. It was about 62 of us, so.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And honestly, it's bandwidth. The human resources team has taken on a lot during COVID. And it's just strictly the fact that we're starting this program from, from start. And we are absolutely looking, going to be getting that data for you. We had a desire to bring this information to you now as we bring the policy forward to the end of March. You may recall, we had an audit from our county auditor who required that we have this presented to you. So that is part of the timing. We will be bringing you that information. And it is truly bandwidth of this team of being able to dive into that and spending the time to get that to you.
I, I do also want to just underscore, we, we know this information is sitting with hiring managers and in various pockets across Washington County. This is the first time that we're pulling all of those pieces together in a comprehensive workforce strategy for Washington County as an entire agency. So that's also what's, what's different and in, in this strategy. And so I just want to highlight that because I do want to underscore, I am confident that we have managers who do know the challenges, but we have to cultivate that information and pull that together into a strategy and then be working to that strategy and measuring that against the data and outcomes that we're seeing.
Thank you both. That's all my questions. I think there might be one small clarifying question on one of the slides that listed. I think what you were doing was adding up the total number of staff throughout the years. And when I first saw that before your presentation, it made it look like we have 12,000 staff total. So I think that one slide, when you're reading it, when I was reading it, when I listened to you, I think it was, I get, I get it. You're saying each year we had this many, and then you added up a total. But when I was reading the information this week, it's made it seem like we have 12,000 staff. So just that clarifying question to the community that our number is not that big. We don't have 12,000 staff working for Washington County.
Thank you for that. We'll take a look at that and make that edit. Thank you. Yeah, it's a five-year total.
Thank you. Thank you, commissioners. I've learned more as a result of your questions, and that's one of the reasons why we have this discussion. If I could start with a couple of data questions or confirmation to make sure I understand or appreciate the, the information you've shared with us today. If we could go to the combination of slides nine and 10. So could you confirm for me, both for the bar chart and then for the next slide with the pie chart? Is that one year data or is that five-year data?
It is five-year data, and I'm going to let Jasmine comment even more. She was the one that put this wonderful data together for us. Jasmine, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I was just going to agree that it's exactly the five years. So from June 2015 to, I believe it was July 2021, from the previous slide.
Yep. Thank you so much. I thought so, but I just wanted to make sure I, I internalized it correctly. I want to really thank you for bringing this information forward. As you mentioned, this is that timely follow-up to the auditor report, also based upon Board of Commissioner interest over the, since 2019. But also feedback from our, the three county administrators that we've had. Bob Davis, then a really terrific interim, Stephen Rhodes, and now in my words, our rock star, Tanya Angie, really helping us modernize our agency. The agency's really grown up quite a bit. Even some of our responsibilities such as additional workforce due to population growth here in the county as reflected, for example, by the Sheriff's Office, but also because of new funding programs, whether it's through federal dollars or state dollars as well as regional dollars with the Affordable Housing Bond Program as well as the supportive housing services measures that didn't exist back in 2019. Right? We've had employee growth, but also the agency has matured. And we're trying to make sure we are a modern agency. As such, this is pertinent for us as county commissioners because with the agency that we are, with over 2,100 employees, we're, we on the commission are going to have to make investment decisions in modern HR practices, such as you've touched on today. That will take budget discipline to balance all of the needs for serving our community and attracting and retaining and maintaining a good workforce. I really appreciate that there are a lot of positions that didn't exist over the course of time and that they are now going to have the benefit of workforce improvements such as the, the five of you have all talked about. It's really terrific. You know, I also appreciate hearing that it's not a one-size-fits-all organization, right? That we are looking at the different needs of the different departments where they're at and making improvements in order to get to a level of good performance for all of our employees across the agency. I, for being with a public agency, I can identify with some of the work that you're going through and some of the, the policy and investment decisions we have to make as a board because of of the experience I had as a metro counselor over 12 years and how that agency had to go through a similar transition. And it took a little bit of time, but more importantly, it took the discipline, right? The will and the discipline to make the, the workforce, not just the people, but the culture and the agency practices more robust, more welcoming and more encouraging. That's one of the most valuable things that I appreciated out of that experience. We have great employees who want to have fruitful careers in public service. People who invest in public service careers make the choice. They're really special people. And because there is a call to service, it isn't just about making a living or making money or, or just having a fruitful career. It's having a fruitful career in public service. It's really, really special. And I didn't appreciate the degree of that until I was in it. So I just really appreciate how far along we, you have brought us. And this goes to you too, Ms. Ms. Angie, and really elevating the, the the nature of human resources across the whole agency and investing in information systems so that we can get better. Lastly, I just want to highlight. I know Ms. Bell, you spoke to our, you're coming back with additional data and informing us of overall workforce and industry information. I am counting on your citing more the HR sources because I know from talking with Ms. Labonte that there, there are HR expert sources to draw on, both the entirety of industry in the US, but also particularly in public service. So I look forward to that, but also from a economic aspect. Commissioner Trees mentioned that yes, we can contract with Eco Northwest, but we also have a treasure trove of information from our own state economist in Josh Lerner. So please do take advantage of that. That's readily available. We don't have to pay additional dollars to harvest that data. So keep up the great work. I really appreciate the timeliness of this. And I'm really looking forward to learning more in the next steps ahead. Thank you so much to you, Ms. Labonte, to you, Ms. Bell, Ms. Jackson, and Ms. Cardenas. I really thank you. Thank you. Oh, and Mr. Shu, thank you too.
Chair, before we end this item, I do just want to give a shout out not only to Eva's leadership, but the leadership of the four HR professionals we have here. This is an example of workforce planning. And what I mean by that is Eva had asked her department, who's interested in working on this? And these four employees said, we are. We have passion and they have subject, subject matter expertise. So I just think this is a great example of also having employees at various levels of the organization also being involved in a key strategic initiative and presenting to the board. So thank you for that.
I think it's, it's easier to feel the, the positive vibes when you're physically in the room together. Right? I've tried to be more demonstrative as we're in these little squares on our screens to try and ensure you have, have indications of that positive vibe other than just our words, right? All that body language. So I hope you're feeling it, team. Good work.
Thank you. We all very much appreciate your comments.
Alrighty, thank you so much to our team. Next, we'll transition to our second topic. Still another way to look at, at data and our public service. So COVID-19 pandemic projections and American Rescue Plan Act ARPA considerations. And once again, we have a treasure trove of subject matter experts and leaders right here in our agency. So I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Russell, to also introduce the other members of our team today. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good morning, Board of Commissioners. My name is Dorian Russell, and I'm the Senior Program Coordinator for your ARPA portfolio. I'm joined today by Dr. Marie Bowman-Davis, our Public Health Division Manager, and Dr. Kimberly Rep, our Chief Epidemiologist. Thank you so much for the time this morning to present on this deeply important topic. In today's presentation, we're going to provide you the best evidence that your staff scientists have for you on the status of the pandemic and also future projections. And really tee up for you how that may impact your future ARPA planning considerations. Can we move to the next slide, please? Thank you. I want to spend some time before we dig into the science, taking a moment to help ground this group. This presentation is going to build on what you already know and are experiencing in the pandemic. I want to acknowledge that this might be a difficult conversation today, but a deeply important one. There are a few things to keep in mind before we get started. First, the science continues to evolve. With your leadership and your commitment to science throughout the pandemic, you have made decisions with science in mind, and those decisions have had real community impacts. Two days ago, we reviewed the community impacts that we're seeing from your ARPA investments so far. You've remained flexible to new information, and so have your program staff. Second, we continue to be in a learning environment. And while there will be challenges described in this presentation, please remember that our tools and our responses have improved over time. We are in a much better place now than we were before in the pandemic. And as a county, our continued learning has only improved the services that we're offering. Third, I want to acknowledge I'm experiencing pandemic fatigue, and I know everyone on this call is too. I want to underscore that we all have optimism that better times are ahead. This presentation is going to show you that we are not yet out of the pandemic and show you some of the realities that we're facing right now. This content might be difficult to digest, but please remember, even the staff who are looking at this data for 12 hours a day still have some optimism. And lastly, the intent of this conversation is to provide data interpretation and some background for you for those future conversations where you may need to apply this information. As Dr. Rep will tell you later in this presentation, scientists don't have a crystal ball. Even with the best statistical models that we have, we can only project so far into the future with accuracy. So again, your staff continue to stay flexible, and we all know we're in a learning environment together. Can we move to the next slide, please? And at this point, I'm going to pass it off to Dr. Bowman-Davis to get us started.
Good morning. Thank you, Dorian. Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. For the benefit of the public, my name is Marie Bowman-Davis. I'm the Public Health Division Manager. Today, we will provide a little bit of background, highlighting some historical data around COVID-19 here in Oregon. Talk a little bit about Omicron spread and impact. We'll try and do our best to answer some current questions about our status and projections. And when do we get to start living with COVID? And then some planning considerations for your commission. Next slide, please. Thank you. So for the benefit of the public, and just as a reminder, COVID-19 is a nationally notifiable disease. So COVID-19 is a disease So COVID-19 is a disease caused by SARS-CoV-2. And because it's reportable nationally, that means it is reportable under Oregon state law. And so investigation and control of disease such as COVID-19 is outlined in Oregon Administrative Rules or OARs under Chapter 333. That's under our Oregon Health Authority, Public Health Division 17, 18 and 19. So our Oregon Health Authority or OHA provides us disease investigative guidelines, also known as our IGs. Since we are still learning about the pandemic, these investigative guidelines are called interim as they continue to be updated as we have new information, new science and new understanding. And so these investigative guidelines that the state provides here in Oregon are also the responsibility of our local public health authorities to follow these investigative guidelines. And so here in Washington County, the Board of County Commissioners are our local public health authority and they help us with our responsibility to administer and enforce these laws and these investigative guidelines. And so our commissioners appoint a public health administrator, which is me. I was appointed in September, right before our Delta wave in the pandemic. Thank you for that honor and opportunity. And so is our responsibility in our division to support the commissioners with ensuring that we are staying in compliance. Next slide, please. And so these investigative guidelines are very long. They have lots of information and what do they tell us? So the investigative guidelines outline our responsibilities, which include what we have here in these kind of boxes. So our case and interviews and contact tracing responsibilities, our outbreak investigation, our infection prevention and control, testing, surveillance, isolation and quarantine, and our data quality and systems. And our data quality and systems are critical, both for local and state understanding of COVID-19 in our cases and our hospitalizations in our communities. And they also help inform state decision makers who are developing our population level policy interventions such as masking and vaccination to help us reduce the spread and disproportionate burden of COVID-19. Next slide, please. So this month, February, it will be two years since Washington County responded to the very first COVID-19 identified infection in the state of Oregon. Our public health team was there onsite on day one and Dr. Rep was a member of that team. When we look at this graph and those data that we just talked about and the importance of the quality of those data, we're seeing over the past about two years, this is up until the end of December. So February 2020 to about December 2021, we're seeing what we identified and the state has identified as surges or waves. And so each of these surges and waves are impacting our communities for about a 90-day cycle. And so here on the graph, you'll see we have five arrows of 90 days. We are currently in the sixth wave. Omicron is the sixth wave and it is the largest wave that we've experienced statewide. It is important to note that although we are seeing downward curves for each wave, which is really important in our communities and how we operate, we are not returning back to baseline. Right? We still have disease in our community. And the good news is that vaccinations do help. And so here, the overlaying on the graph, there's a transparent overlay. And what that is, is our vaccination rate over time. And so we could see that in the spring and summer of last year, as we had increased availability and access to vaccinations and eligibility for vaccinations and we were outdoors during spring and summer, we have lower disease burden in our community. Then our fifth arrow on the far right, that is when our Delta variant arrived in Oregon, which was two times more transmissible than our original strain. And so we did see an increase in cases, but notably, we also had increases in vaccinations, which helped protect our community from severe disease illness and hospitalizations and death. Omicron, which we're experiencing now is six times more transmissible than Delta. And we are seeing breakthrough cases, which means persons that have been vaccinated can develop COVID-19. However, they, in general, are experiencing less severe disease, which is great. That means the vaccine is working. Next slide, please. So just for fun, we talk about Delta and Omicron, all the different names, the variants, right? So there is international surveillance of SARS-CoV-2 and genetic lineages. There are many more that are being tracked than we, we have experienced within our community. There are variants of interest and variants of concern. And so internationally, nationally, and here in even Oregon, this is our Oregon tracking of variants. We see and the yellow and red that Delta was with us for some time. That's been our last surge right before Omicron. And then now we're experiencing Omicron. So this is just letting you know that there are public dashboards if you're interested in tracking variants and the variants do align up well with kind of what we're seeing as far as our cycles. Next slide, please. So what do we know across the cycles? So with each cycle, we are seeing disproportionate impacts of the pandemic across cases and hospitalizations. This slide here is a cumulative look at COVID-19 in Washington County. So when we look at the cumulative cases by race and ethnicity versus the proportion of our Washington County population that was estimated, we see that we have inequities. And so specifically on this graph, we identify that we have in our overall case rate for our Hispanic, Latino, Latina, Latinx community, throughout the nearly two years, they're still experiencing disproportionate burden. So they have more cases than they have. Then we have representation as far as residents in our community. And I believe the Commissioners had a great update on data just on Tuesday. So next slide, please. When we think about hospitalizations across the cycles, we are also seeing disproportionate experience in our marginalized communities. And so here, our Hispanic, Latino, Latinx community is experiencing hospitalizations. And so although not displayed here, when we think back to those 90-day cycles, our local and statewide demos, data demonstrate that each of the waves of COVID-19 differentially impact communities of color. So you can look at it cumulatively and you can look at it by wave and we are seeing the inequities and these inequities are being addressed and need to continue to be addressed in our COVID-19 response. And as we are talking about developing thoughtful recovery strategies. And at this point in the pandemic, we have effective interventions. We have lots of tools. And one of the most effective interventions and strategies to prevent severe disease and hospitalization is our COVID-19 vaccination and also our boosters. Next slide, please. So as we, oh, there we go. Thank you. So with our COVID-19 vaccination, we still have a statewide goal of reaching 80% of our 18 and older population. And when we look at our successes, Washington County is leading the state across all the vaccination metrics we have for our rarest race and ethnicity categories displayed here. However, it is still important to note that we have community members that still have not had an opportunity to be vaccinated. We still have inequities. And so when you have disproportionate burden of cases and you have lower vaccination rates, we're now talking about some compounding vulnerabilities and community burdens. And so we are still working towards helping our community with our mobile vaccination efforts and other efforts to help our community reach this, this goal of 80%. And then also we're going to continue to help with boosters and those goals come from our CDC and OHA. And next slide, please. Okay. The, as Dorian mentioned, we're already experiencing the impacts of Omicron. We're experiencing them and we're going to continue to experience them. We've seen schools impacted, school closures. We've seen surges in cases and hospitalizations. We just identified some vaccine equity concerns. We have overburdened healthcare systems and we also have underreporting of COVID-19 cases in our investigative guidelines. The testing that is required to come to public health are the lab-based test results. So our home-based tests are not required to be reported to public health. And so as more of those become available in our community, it's a good thing. And it also means that our, we know that our measure of burden in our community is going to be underreported. We will continue to see some increased absences and workforce challenges. You may see things missing from the shelves at the grocery store still because we're, we're still in that 90-day wave right now. So as we move forward, we need to continue to focus on vaccine and our health and our economic equity efforts. And so at this point, next slide, please. We want to turn over to Dr. Rep to address some of the common questions. Dr. Rep helps represent Washington County in many of our media interviews because she is one of our leading experts. And so I will turn this over to her.
Thank you, Dr. Bowman Davis. Thank you, Commissioners, for having us here today. My name is Kim Rep. I'm the Chief Epidemiologist for our county. And today I'm going to talk about some of the common questions that have been asked from the public and in media the past month or so. And these questions are, where are we at right now with the pandemic? What's going to come next? And when do we start get to, start to get to treat COVID like influenza? When is it just going to be part of daily life? Next slide, please. This is what we're looking at here is the state of Oregon and the caseload from December to January. As you can see, we had about 8,000 cases a week statewide in January. We had 1,000 a week in Washington County specifically. As case counts go up, I think we are all aware that our public health efforts and response has to increase. The outbreak management, the community need for services, our residents who are honoring our requests for quarantine and isolation and need that support increase when we have increased case counts. Next slide, please. We have been talking about inequities in our community across racial and ethnic lines. And I wanted to also acknowledge one of perhaps the most jaw-dropping disparities in health outcomes is through unvaccinated versus vaccinated individuals. A person who is unvaccinated, there, the group is likely to have eight times more COVID cases. We know that the hospitalization rates are considerably higher and death is also exceptionally higher in persons who are unvaccinated. And as Dr. Bowman Davis said earlier, it, we do have breakthrough cases. So people who are vaccinated that still get infected. However, those outcomes are, as you can see very clearly on here, they are considerably lower than those who are unvaccinated and the disease is much less severe in that particular group. And we care, we care about this because this helps us focus our efforts as well. So in terms of compounding effects in the community, like Dr. Bowman Davis said, not only do you have the, the unvaccinated on top of marginalized communities, on, on top of all the social determinants that come into play there to affect that. That's a lot of different factors that deeply affect an individual in our community's ability to access healthcare to, and to make it through their case of COVID. Next slide, please. Yes, the modeling are our favorite. So Dr. Graven at OHSU, I had, and his team have been doing these amazing modelings, the entire pandemic. And he's been doing a great job. What you're looking at here, and we've had a new forecast since this one, but you're looking at the, basically the hospitalization count for Oregon. And you can see Delta, we got up to 1,200-ish. And that was pretty devastating to our healthcare system. I think we can all remember that. And at, at this time for this forecast, which was January 20th, the prediction was over 1,500 cases. The revised forecast that came out a couple of days ago, it's going to be closer to what Delta was and the peak should happen in a few days. We know that hospitalization counts are delayed about seven to 10 days after our case counts. And as we probably noticed, our case counts are going down, which means our hospitalizations will peak shortly. So that's, that's what we're expecting. We are still having a record high hospitalizations. We know that our healthcare system is exhausted and overwhelmed. We are going to have a decrease in, by the end of February for our hospitalizations in cases. It's not going to be a perfect, easy, quick, two-week drop-off where we go back to zero cases. Again, throughout this pandemic, we have never gone back to where we were before the pandemic. Like we've never dropped that low again, or frankly, even close to it. So what you're looking at here is Omicron. And we are talking a lot about new variants and I'll talk about this a little bit more. But what we don't see on here is this is Omicron, right? So there are sub-variants of Omicron. Some of you have probably heard about Stealth Omicron taking over Denmark and other areas. So we're not done. It's great to look at Omicron and be like, yes, we're going to be done with this wave and, you know, maybe a month or so. But we're, we're not done in general. We care about these hospitalizations because of when the healthcare capacity is exceeded, it doesn't just affect people who have COVID that need to get it. It affects people who are in car crashes. It affects people who have strokes. It affects people who have absolutely nothing to do with COVID, not being able to access care, lifesaving care. So that is a huge ripple effect on our community across the board when our hospital capacity is exceeded. So as public health and health and human services, we keep a very, very close eye on our hospital capacity and our hospitalizations for that reason, because it affects the community so much. Next slide, please. All right, time to get out the crystal ball that we all, that we all know and love. So what, what's going to happen next? So even the best modeling in the world, like the best in the world, World Health Organization models, no one will go past 90 days. So I just want to disclose that for everyone here. Nobody really knows the answer. But I can, I'm going to summarize what the best experts in the world are telling us at this point. So as we have alluded to this entire presentation, the further along we go in this pandemic, the more the inequities are exacerbated, right? So the more people who don't have access to vaccine or healthcare access, that, that just amplifies and amplifies and amplifies each time we go through one of these waves. So we absolutely have to consider, continue centering equity and looking at our most vulnerable populations, whatever they may be, and focus our efforts in a targeted manner to make sure we address those inequities as much as we can. The other, the, the not-so-awesome news is that the experts are predicting a fully vaccine-evasive variant as soon as March. So as we know, we do have breakthrough infections. That is, you know, that would be considered vaccine-evasive, but I'm, they are talking about a complete vaccine-evasive variant. And I'm going to talk about how we can avoid this in the future shortly after this slide. But that's the, that's what's coming up next. And from a biological perspective, that actually makes a lot of sense because as the virus evolves, it wants to infect as many people as possible. And the next step, we saw Omicron bumped up. We started getting breakthrough cases. So the next step would be completely bypassing the vaccine. So that would make sense. And because of that, people are getting sick, even if they have less severe illness, which is awesome because of the vaccine. That is going to affect our workforce and supply chain problems. Even though people are able to work remote for some positions across the county. If you're, if you have COVID, you can't work even when you're at home, right? So it's not necessarily a bypass. And of course, all our first responders and our, you know, our grocery staff, all the people that we depend on to survive, they will not be able to report to work with COVID. So I would, I would expect that we would continue to see impacts of supply chains as these waves continue, when they are in the hospital with COVID, can take and it reduces the length of hospitalization and/or avoids death. That's great. As I think we all know, that we just got our Pfizer vaccine for our younger people. And that's going to come on board soon. So there's a lot of, the science is also keeping up as best as we can with what the virus is doing. And we're coming at it from every single angle. And every day that goes by, we get closer to either, you know, a better universal vaccine, a new treatment, or anything that we can do to reduce the impact of this virus on our community. Next slide, please. Now, the question that would be completely logical to ask. So why are we getting vaccinated if nature is going to create a vaccine-evasive variant? Totally makes sense. So we have probably in the country, I don't know, maybe close to a million more people alive that would be dead if they hadn't been vaccinated. Probably more. We know this number is thousands for our Washington County residents. So the presence of a vaccine has kept thousands and thousands of people alive that would otherwise be dead. Either from exacerbated hospital capacity or just medical fragility, any of those things. So the vaccine keeps us alive. It keeps us from being hospitalized more than being unvaccinated. And most importantly, it prevents death. Vaccines are not in place to stop infections. They're there to keep you from dying. And they're there to keep you from being hospitalized. And that's, and they are doing their job in that way. So what are we going to do as scientists? If the virus bypasses what we have now? Well, we're going to do what we always do. We're going to make something else. We're going to make something better. Now, there's going to be a lag, of course, just like any other science or treatment. But that doesn't mean we're, we're done or we're throwing in the towel. And then, of course, there are actually multiple pharmaceutical companies working on a universal vaccine. So this is, this is going to continue. But from a biological perspective, I would expect that we would continue to see sort of a, the virus evolving in a way that evades our current vaccines. Next slide, please. Okay, so everything that we do in EpiLand revolves around this triangle, absolutely everything. So what is this triangle? There are three elements. And all of these elements have to be in place for a person to get sick. If one of the elements are not in place, a person cannot get sick. So you have the host, which is the person, our, you know, community members that can get infected. The agent is the virus, in our case, SARS-CoV-2. And the environment means the place where the agent and the host interact. So does the environment exist in a way where the virus can come in contact with humans? So all three of those have to be in place in order for one person to get infected. And next, please. So what we are doing is we are trying to break one of the bonds of that triangle. And what we are trying to do is prevent the agent, the virus, from being able to infect the host. So all the public health interventions that we are talking about, whether it's physical distancing, whether it's vaccination, whether it's wearing masks, all of those behaviors are trying to break that edge of the triangle. Because if that is broken, the virus can no longer infect us. From a biological perspective, it really is this simple. We just have to break one of the bonds on this triangle. Now, we can do any of them. And we're trying to do a lot of different ones, like the physical distancing is changing the environment so the virus can't get to the host, right? Like, all, all the things that we're trying to do are attacking different bonds of this triangle. So one area where it will, we can start living it with like flu is if we actually successfully prevent the virus from infecting us. And that can be through, you know, treatment, medication, natural immunity, vaccination, physical distancing, masking, all those things that we're already doing. So that is one way we can start living with this. Next slide. This is the second way. Let's say we, as a population, can't get our stuff together enough to break one of the bonds of the triangle, okay? And that has, that's a global situation, right? That's not a Washington County-specific situation. So let's say we keep it all intact. We let the virus infect. We keep going. Next slide. When we will, we will live with COVID like we do with flu. When COVID infections or COVID season happens and it doesn't destroy our healthcare system. So right now, or previous to now, we'd have, we have influenza season every year. We know that. We go get our flu vaccines. It does not, with the exception of H1N1, it does not incapacitate our healthcare system, right? Our healthcare system can handle that load every year. So when we get to the point with the virus where we can go through a season and it does not threaten our hospital capacity, that is when we will start living with COVID like it's influenza. That will be, that is how we will know, okay, this is part of our lives. It's not a threat to our, you know, collapsing our healthcare system. And we can continue on with our lives to the best of our ability. So those are the two ways, quite simply, that this goes. So we can start basically living with COVID in a more natural manner like we do with influenza. So I am going to turn it over back to Dr. Bowman Davis to take us through the planning considerations.
Thank you, Dr. Rep. So the kind of key message is here is that we're experiencing 90-day surge cycles, right? And so although, as Dr. Rep mentioned, the impacts are going to continue to vary. Hopefully, this, the virus continues to change and become less severe so that we can live with it like the flu. It doesn't harm our healthcare system. We're going to need to continue to stay on top of surveillance and monitoring and working with our communities as we move through these 90-day cycles. Dr. Rep also mentioned respiratory flu season and respiratory virus season. That's part of what we see in these cycles is that the more we're indoors, the more the virus spreads, the more we're outdoors, the fewer cases we have, the less the virus spreads. So that kind of, that's a little bit of stability and predictability that we have now in some cycles. We also still have work to do to continue to address disparities and the disproportionate burdens on marginalized populations. Dr. Rep mentioned social determinants of health, that, you know, kind of the, the systematic and structural inequities that existed pre-COVID. And then now with, with this ongoing COVID experience that we're having, kind of the cumulative burdens that need to be addressed. And new variants, they'll continue to come. Some are going to be variants of interest. Some are going to be variants of concern. And what this means for planning is that our systems are going to need to continue to be responsive and flexible as the commissioners have been supporting us with. And also proactively address the inequities. And so as Dr. Rep mentioned, when we have higher cases, that means there's usually higher community need for supports, business supports. And then fewer cases, we have lower kind of need and requests. And so being flexible and responsive is going to be important. And I believe, next slide, I will be turning this back over to Dorian.
Thanks so much. So what does this mean for our work, really interpreting and applying this for the services we provide in the county? First, the pandemic is not going away yet. That's the first takeaway. We're going to have to continue addressing those household economic and community needs that were mentioned throughout this presentation. Second, underscoring again that there will continue to be inequities. We see that with every single wave thus far. And what this means for our work is that we need to have an increased commitment to addressing disproportionate impacts to marginalized communities through our work. Third, challenging work continues for us on the horizon. We're not done yet. We're continually assessing pandemic realities and making sure that we are continuing to be in that state of learning to provide resilient and flexible operations. Next slide, please. So I mentioned to you on Tuesday that this is, that our meeting on Tuesday was part one of two. This is part of our continued conversation. And the data interpretation that you had today will be useful in the long run in applying that information to your future ARPA decisions. What this means right now for ARPA, for people, this means a continued need for investment, really understanding that we continue to have pandemic impacts to businesses, schools, families, and individuals. For our services, this means we need to continue to follow our framework values in protecting public health, leading with equity, leaning into collaboration, planning for resilience, and making sure that we have good governance. We're continuing to identify needs for the board in this way. And finally, looking ahead for future investment planning, we're currently forecasting how far the current fund allocations will carry for our existing response needs, thinking about community wellness and the economic investments that we've made. We're going to continue to help you to identify what your priorities are for future ARPA frameworking. I want to underscore again that our ARPA work continues to have great impact, especially as we continue to go through these 90-day cycles of pandemic variants. It's really important that the previous decisions that you've made with science in mind have had really important outcomes, both in response and for recovery. While we're facing really difficult realities for what both of these scientists have shown, and we're still very much in the pandemic, better times are ahead. And with continuous learning and adjustment and using the tools that scientists from across the country and across the world continue to innovate, we will get there. Next slide, please. And finally, I want to interpret some next steps for you with this information. Your board and staff, there's opportunity to integrate the learnings from these pandemic projections in our planning for ARPA and in other ways as well. We're doing our best to help you fully understand the most up-to-date science. And secondly, helping you to have evidence-informed strategic conversations. And what I mean by evidence-informed is really making sure that you have a strong grounding and strong understanding and what the most up-to-date data and information are telling us so that you're able to lead with the science, making decisions that have been double and triple-checked by the best information to date. Next slide, please. That's all the information that we have for you today. Again, this is a part of a continued conversation. So thank you for the time today for this important conversation.
Thank you very much, team. And now we'll turn to commissioners for more, or continuing that conversation. So commissioners, questions, thoughts? Go ahead, Commissioner Rogers.
Well, thank you. I, this stuff gets complex really, really quick. And we've heard, I don't know how many, two years, I guess, of the information. And I, I have a really tough question, but I appreciated the breaking of the bonds. A bit of humor, it always reminded me of a famous line, "Let my people go." Well, I want the break and let our people go. And this is, that's probably one of the more graphic, interesting ways of depicting that information. So I appreciate that. This board is made up of a composition of a whole lot of different people, just like your departments are. And we all have different viewpoints on different things. We have different constituencies and we hear different information. One of the things that I've always followed, and in fact, I know the rest have done this as well, is that we follow the science. And you must have said that, well, all of you, about 10 times in each of your presentations. We follow the science, we follow the science, the best evidence that we have. One of the things that I hear, and it may be different from other commissioners, is what is the science? Because reasonable people have different ideas. And you say, the science is the science. But as much as I'm looking at people, you know, I'm following their advice and I continue to. There are experts in other parts of this country who have lots of credentials, who are arguing that the very science that you're talking about is not accurate. And they're citing all kinds of different studies and so forth. What I have done continually is say, well, I have to follow our experts, not somebody else's. So that's what we do. But having said that, the chorus is getting to be more of a crescendo of folks who are saying, in, in most professions, including the one I'm in, there isn't lots of different sciences. And I appreciate you can come to a little different conclusion, looking at the facts differently. But there's lots of different thoughts and lots of different experts. And some with very impressive medical degrees from very prestigious universities and different organizations around the country with different views. So how, how do you suggest, as somebody who's not with your expertise, answer questions about, well, that's not what everybody else is doing. That's not what's being done in Texas. That's not what's being done in Arizona. That's not what's being done in Florida. That's not being done wherever. And they're willing to take different viewpoints. So how do we answer that?
I'm happy to tee this up from a science communication perspective and then send it right over to our two PhDs here. But in terms of really figuring out what is the science, what does it mean to lead with science? We really have to look at the science community as a whole, not just individual people with credentials. So when we think about what is science, good science leads on peer review. And so when you think about individual papers that you may be looking at, have those papers been reviewed by the scientific community with consensus? Really, what we mean by science is community peer-reviewed. I think a very similar piece of this is some of your conversations on topics like climate change. For example, you may have a couple of examples of individuals who have different points of view. But if 98% of the scientific community agrees, you can lead with that as being the science. And I'll turn it over to our two PhDs.
I'm happy to start on, on that one. Thank you for that question. I think that's absolutely something that people across the country are wondering. A couple of things. So this is clinical medicine and research are not the same thing. So physicians that are investigating the clinical trials of do these drugs cure the disease is one thing versus scientists that are doing sort of the research at the population level. That's a completely different group of people. And I agree, based on your own confirmation bias, you can find something that agrees with you or disagrees with you 100 times. We know that to be a fact on everything. What I do, because I'm fortunate enough to have the training and education, I go read the peer-reviewed literature myself and make my own decisions. That's what whole committees do for the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention or the World Health Organization. So what I do is I look to those huge overriding bodies with sort of, you know, international-level weigh-in from the best scientists in the world. And I look what they come out with and why. Because when they state sort of a fact or an opinion about where this pandemic is headed, they have to bring their receipts, so to speak. And they will reference all the literature that you can read for yourself. One of the things to also ask yourself when listening to different individuals speak or organizations speak about the pandemic is, who has benefit from it? Are they selling something? Are they part of the pharmaceutical company, et cetera, et cetera? It's important to think about what, who gets benefit from what they're saying. Personally, with us standing up here today, we don't get any benefit from this pandemic. It's just a lot of really, really, really hard work for all of us. So you can generally speaking, in my opinion, trust someone who doesn't have a quote-unquote So you can generally speaking, in my opinion, trust someone who doesn't have a quote-unquote "dog in the fight," so to speak. So that I also look at that when I'm talking about, another good thing to do is the states you mentioned have some of the highest death rates in the country for COVID, like really, really, really high. So check their receipts. You know, these mandates of vaccine versus mask versus social distancing, they do have very measured outcomes on death and hospitalizations. And you can, that's publicly available. Anybody can check that. So you do see different health outcomes based on what each state or, you know, country in some cases are doing. And you can look at that and make your own decision too. But overall, I would look at the number of scientists that contribute to the decision that you're making. I would look if any of them would have any sort of benefit from what they're saying, or are they selling something? And, you know, of course, as Dorian said, everything's got to be peer-reviewed. If they're not presenting you with actual peer-reviewed literature that supports their opinion, I'd walk away right away. And I don't know, Dr. Bowman Davis, do you have anything else to add on that?
I could, but I think I would be of value. I think you both have done a great job. I think it'd be of value to hear any other comments the commissioners have at this time. Thank you.
I just add, thank you. That, I'll try to take that and distill it into a succinct answer, not that yours wasn't good. But as we continue to follow what our experts here are saying, be rest assured that we get bombarded with people who don't share those thoughts. And so it's, I will profess, the other four don't have to admit this, but I profess I like to have great snappy answers back as to why. And so I'm looking at two experts and saying, hmm, that makes sense. I like the peer review. I like the idea of who's benefiting. I mean, that's excellent feedback and I, rest assured, I'll use it. So thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, who's next? Were you all set? If you could just give me a thumbs up or a head nod if you're all set, Commissioner Fy, Commissioner Rogers. Okay, I have a couple of things. So you want to put the slides back up. Really tremendous work, team. Thank you very much. On the grounding slide, I don't have a question on it. You can stay right here, slide-wise. But rather, I wanted to thank you, Dorian, for providing that slide because what you presented there and what you gave voice to really needed to be said, really. We've learned a lot. Thanks to everyone across our agency, including public health or especially public health, but it's been a team effort. This agency and our community have fared pretty well compared to others. But darn it, it's still been wicked hard. Wicked. As Dr. Bowman Davis mentioned, she joined as our public health officer during Delta. And I really want to express my sincere thanks to her. Towards, well, all during the month of August, you all know, you've heard, I really threw myself at pursuing any idea that would reduce one more death, prevent one more death, and reduce suffering. And Dr. Bowman Davis met with me while I was a puddle of tears as I had exhausted all those ideas. And I want to thank her for her leadership in pulling together the, her regional health peers to help me accept, in my heart, that which I had to accept, that we couldn't reduce that one more death or reduce that suffering just with excellent county practices. It had to be done, not just by county, not just by region, but as a state. And that was so friggin' hard to accept. But it was necessary and I thank her for her leadership and compassion. Our community, our state, our world has been going through incredible hardship and continues to. There was a slide where, that was titled "The 90-Day Cycle", and it talked about lowering the disease burden. But I have to say, sure doesn't feel like it. It's still pretty, it feels pretty darn depressive that this disease is in control. So my question from seeing that slide, and actually, if we could go to it, it's the one that has the variants on the 90-day slides, the 90-day cycle. I'll wait until it's displayed. Sorry, I can't tell you what the number is. There you go. Whoops, that one. Thank you. So what I have failed to understand, and maybe it's too soon, but I would really like to understand, because I have forgotten. You mentioned baseline, and I've totally forgotten what baseline looks like. Because, for example, where we are now, we're still very much in that extreme risk. We're a little less high in the extreme risk. And Mr. Carr, you've been awesome at reminding me of where we stand. I'm grateful for those gentle reminders. But team, I have forgotten what baseline looks like. Could you remind me of that?
I would say that our new baseline will be when we have cases and it doesn't exacerbate the hospital system or healthcare system. Like that will be, and it's not going to be necessarily year-round, as Dr. Bowman Davis said. When we're outside, our cases are going to be lower, right? When we're cramped inside, like flu season, that's when all respiratory diseases thrive. It's going to be worse. And then on top of this, we have 90-day cycles. So ideally, our baseline would be such that, you know, when we might have, maybe we'll have 50 cases a day or 100 cases a day, but it's not enough to threaten our healthcare system. That will be our new baseline. And from going through these cycles, we have a pretty good idea of what our hospital system can handle in terms of COVID caseload. So, you know, at the bottom, these dips, at the very bottom, aren't destroying our hospital capacity. I'm sorry, Chair Harrington, were you going to say something?
You hit the nail on the head. Bingo. That's what I need to understand. So, so it looks like, if I understood you, these trots
Yes.
really are indicators of that. And the point of the trough does vary from variant to variant. I get that. Wow. So I just have to wait until you guys wave a green-yellow flag that says we're in a pretty good state now?
So honestly, if we go three months without a wave, I would say we're closer to baseline, right? If these, if these 90-day cycles either, like, are eliminated or, you know, we hit the low transmission official designation by the CDC, if any of those happen, then that's, that's a sign that we're there. But as long as we still see these huge peaks every 90 days, we're still at it. We've got to wait for those, those peaks to be done with.
That was a huge help. I needed that reminder. Like low transmission by the CDC. That was, I can't tell you, for my logical self and my heart self, that is what I needed to hear. I really want to thank Dorian for voicing. Better times are ahead. We will get there. Commissioners, I think that needs to be our consistent theme, especially with our State of the County address. Dr. Rep., I have heard you on numerous and through numerous media reports. You make knowledge so relatable to us, us being JQ public. And yes, I know I'm a geek, but still, this health stuff, wow, it's a whole different world. And while with all of your help, I have managed to increase my knowledge base over these last two years. As Commissioner Rogers says, it's still pretty darn complex. So a genuine thank you for making all of this so relatable. I know our, our community members and our elected peers really appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am.
That crystal ball slide tells me that I need to normalize wearing a mask. And yeah, I wear it consistently, but I need to think of it as part of my life. Ahead. It's no big deal. It's just like putting on my shoes or putting on my coat when it's cold. It, and I mention this because it's part of my life now, just as I saw elsewhere in my global travels during my prior career and prior Japan and China pre-COVID. So thank you. I also, at one point where we talked about our workforce, I was reminded from the State Economist and Economic Development data recently that only one in four Oregon workers can work remotely. So these thoughts about, you know, the office of the future and things like that, we need to be very careful. We still have a majority of professions where being on the work site is important. And this is where your support of businesses through these cycles, you know, when you mention that, it's just not about the families and the workers, but also the work environment is so vital. So thank you. To our workforce, I know you're tired. Aren't we all, this COVID fatigue? But one thing I have been trying to stress here in 2021, 2022 especially, you need to take a break from all of this intensity. We are doing everything we can to normalize in our work environment, taking vacations and disconnected ones at that, even for our executive staff. From every single member of our greater than 2,100 workforce at Washington County and another 400 at Clean Water Services, please go on vacation. Just, just as you were intentional pre-COVID, before COVID, in going on vacations. Now, how you do it, yeah, that'll change. It always has from year to year. But you're human. We care for you. Please take a break from the intensity. Better times are ahead. We will get there. Thank you so much, team. Really valuable information and insight. Thank you for helping us continue to do our very thoughtful work on behalf of our community. Yes, Ms. Angie, please take it.
Chair Harrington and Board, just as a reminder, we will be taking the clips from Tuesday's work session as well as this discussion, and I will email those clips to each of you in case there's community members or partners you would like to share that with. We will be sharing this information with our city managers, special district managers, as well as our state, Washington County delegates, legislative delegation as well.
All righty. Well, once again, thank you, team. And at this juncture in our meeting, oh, and thank you, Ms. Tana Gucci-Dennis for joining us. I know you've been listening in. We're going to take a break for 15 minutes, but when we return, we are going to return to executive session. So we will take a break to 11:20. But before we do that, I need a motion to adjourn to executive session. Okay, Commissioner Treese is waving, wait. Commissioner Treese is waving me down. Yes, ma'am. Oh, was that a motion? Sorry. Motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to ORS 192.660 sub 2 sub D for the purpose of labor negotiations. And now I've said all the required text. We have a motion from Commissioner Treese. Do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Rogers, all those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries five to zero. So at 11:20, we'll be on a different link and we'll see you then.